Good morning. Senator had to get some people back from Israel, so he was a little delayed here today. But fortunately, he's successful in getting some of our people home again, so that's fantastic. So we will allow that delay in regards to that. And as Bernie Dardis says, especially if they're bringing some priests home, that's really fantastic. Senator Hoven, you get to start this meeting off. I want to thank all the Agassiz members and Garrison members that showed up today. You can tell this room is full, and everybody has come here today. Even Tom came from Carrington because he uses these on the video screen because he doesn't want to miss hunting up there or something. Yes, so, hey. So it's your take off.
Sorry. Now, Tom told me the reason he came is you kept cutting off his mic just when he was getting warmed up. Figured you'd take care of that. Thanks to all of you for being here. Obviously, our special guest is the Bureau of Recommissioner Camille Tooton. And we appreciate very much her coming, and I do have to, and Brent Esplin, who's with her as well. We had worked to see if Tommy Bodril, the Deputy Secretary, could be with us. Didn't work in his schedule, and he's actually leaving for evidently some other position. I texted him and just told him how much we'll miss him. He's been tremendous help to us on a variety of projects, so we'll really miss him. And, you know, hopefully we'll get somebody that won't be as good because he's tremendous, but that's very good. But certainly Commissioner Tooton has been tremendous to work with. And she actually has been out to see the Red River Valley Water Supply Project and Endos as far as the intakes and the Snake Creek Pumping Plant. So she has been out to the Missouri River and to Lake Skakowea, Lake Audubon. So she's seen that side of it, and we had her out there. As you know, we're finishing, as Alan Walters will tell you, we're finishing up the treatment plant at Max, which takes water for NOS up to Minot, and that's been a 20-plus-year endeavor. So that's a huge milestone. But anyway, so you'll have to maybe come back out for the dedication of that. Gail Norton, Secretary of Interior, when I was Governor in 2001, probably before you were born, I don't know. But she signed a Fonzie, and we still don't have that NOS water flowing to Minot, but it's going to be soon, isn't it, Alan, very soon? Because we'll have that treatment done, which will just expand the northwest area of water. The southwest pipeline project is done very well. We have the western pipeline project, and we have various others around the state. But we really need this one. And so, you know, we'll talk about both the state project, the water, the Red River Water Supply Project, and the federal project, Endos, the eastern North Dakota Water Supply Project. And when I turn this over to Mahoney, he's going to say all of those three times really fast, just to impress you, okay?
Thank you.
So don't let him forget, or try to weasel out of it, all right? But all of these projects are incredibly important, but we now need to make sure that Endos is utilized. Essentially, this is all about making sure that Endos is fully utilized because it saves about a quarter, well, probably 250 million, quarter of a billion dollars in terms of building out the Red River Valley Water Supply Project upfront, and then annual operating costs. It will save significantly as well. And they'll tell you all about that. But Dwayne DeCrave from Garrison Conservancy District, and Tammy Norgard, who's really put together a lot of how this all, how it all fits together, has done incredible work to partner this up in a way that should work. And so now our challenge really is we need to reauthorize the Dakota Water Resources Act because we've pretty much run out of authorization. And that includes both the Native American and not Native American portions. It's typically been a 50-50 split. But that needs to be reauthorized. I think we'll get that done either at the end of this year or maybe at the end of next year because we almost always do a Word of Bill, which is a water bill. That's an authorizing bill. I don't think that that, knock on wood, that I think is pretty straightforward because that's not the money. And when it gets tough is when we need to get the dollars. And this all-in is about, how much is the total project, Mayor?
1.15 billion.
Yeah, so it's 1.15 billion, and the federal end is, so I don't say it.
454.
454. So our challenge is to get that 454, and to get it in a timely way because, as you've seen with the Red River Valley Flood Protection Project, which is a $3.2 billion project, of which, you know, the federal end is about 750 million, the local people and the state are stepping up and doing this, and so we've got to get our portion done as well. And when it comes to funding at that level, you know, we need to dig in and get going so we've got the dollars and they can move forward. And of course, not getting it done timely not only puts folks at risk, but it costs more. So thank you so much for being here. You've seen the west side, you've seen the source, and now you're seeing, you know, where the water goes. And of course, these folks represent, you know, hundreds of thousands of people that ultimately will be the people that need using and need that water. Okay, so that's kind of for openers. And then I thought if we could just kind of, Mayor, do you want to, I can ask each of the mayors to say a few words, or do you want to just kind of go around and then ask Director Tooton for some words? What do you think works the best here?
Maybe we could introduce the people around, and then I'm sure Tooton could make some remarks, and then we'll go through the project if that would work. And then mayors always love to say a little something, so they're all welcome to say something nice about the city or something.
Well, let's roll around and then see what the Commissioner has, and then ask the mayors to start waiting, and then just go around and make sure everybody has a chance to input, and if there's anybody out as well that's joining us that has some input, we want to make sure we're very inclusive here. We want to finish up around 10:40 or so so we can kind of update the media. I also want to acknowledge Ben Lean from Senator Amy Klobuchar's office. So obviously, again, this is a case where we're North Dakota and Minnesota working together. Carson Lett with Senator Tina Smith. And both Amy and Tina, of course, we work with them on all kinds of things, certainly on water. And then Michael Kelch is here from Senator Carrington. So with that, yeah, Mayor, let's go around.
I'm Dwayne DeCrave, the General Manager of Garrison Divergent Conservancy District, which represents the state in the building of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project.
I'm Alan Walters, I'm Chairman of Garrison Divergent Conservancy District Board.
Kimberly Cook, Communications Director for Garrison Divergent.
Tammy Norgard, I'm an attorney with Vogel Law Firm, working with Garrison Divergent.
John Shockley, I'm an attorney with Onsted Twitchell, representing Lawa.
Jim Smalls, East Central Region Water District.
Mark Johnson, Casserole Water.
Lava, it was tough southeast for water.
Bill Bonecak, City of Mago.
Tom Erdman, I'm the Mayor at Carrington. I'm also on the board for Lake Agassiz Water Authority.
Travis Schmidt, General Manager, Morehead Public Service, Morehead, Minnesota, Water and Electric Utility, also on the board for Lake Agassiz Water.
Mayor Shelley Carlson from Morehead, Minnesota. And any time that I am able to be invited to a meeting with Senator Hoven, I'm absolutely going to say yes because he and I come from the same hometown of Minot. So thank you.
We don't tell the other mayors, but she is our favorite.
Dave Carlzrude, Lawa Board and Mayor of Valley City.
I'm Keith Nelson from Rural Water, and also on the director of Lawa.
My name is Mark Pritchard. I'm the Water Plant Manager for Morehead Public Service.
I'm Bruce Grubb, City of Fargo Administration, and I've been working on this project for almost 25 years now.
I thought you retired.
It's a little like Mick Jagger. You just can't leave the stage for good. You just keep coming back.
I've always kind of thought of you and Mick Jagger.
Todd, the Island City Minister, thanks for being here.
Good to see you.
Brandon Bocheski, Mayor of the City of Grand Forks, and I think we'll end up being one of the main funding partners, at least locally, for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project.
Bernie Dardis, Mayor of West Fargo.
Andrew Travnik, Director of the North Dakota Department of Water Resources and Secretary to the State Water Commission. And just on behalf of Governor Burgum, just want to thank you for the opportunity, Senator Hoven, for being here. And then also...
Who's not here with us today? What's going on?
I know, you get me.
Huh? I thought you'd be here.
And then, of course, Commissioner, thank you for being back in North Dakota. Great to see you again. And then the Minot crew, we'll take that as well. So thanks.
All right. I'm Brent Esplin. I'm the Regional Director for the Missouri Basin Region for Reclamation.
He's been really helpful to us. Thanks, Brent.
And good morning. I'm Camille Tooten with the Bureau of Reclamation.
Okay, now you get to give the Gettysburg Address.
Happy to do so. Good morning, Senator. Good morning, mayors. It's great to be back in North Dakota, and thank you for the invitation to return. You know, when we were here last summer, it was really looking at the infrastructure, the pipes, and the concrete, and the rebar, and the significant progress that we're all making. But what's really important today is, at the heart of what we do at Reclamation, it's about people. And so to be here, to see where the water would be, and to see the vibrant communities here in North Dakota is really important for me, but also important to the core of the Bureau of Reclamation, which is our mission. We are committed to these projects. We are 100% committed to these projects. And part of that with the bipartisan infrastructure law is $77 million that we've invested in North Dakota alone. And we will continue to work with the Senator and Congress to make sure that we have the resources to move these projects forward. I will also say that we can't do this without all your partnerships, but also for my team, the team that we have at Reclamation, Joe Hall, who's our Dakota Area Manager, as well as Danny Fettig, who is our expert on rural water projects. So just want to thank them because they are your partners here on the ground who constantly advocate for the need to complete these projects. I look forward to listening to our conversation, to learning from you, and I look forward to returning, Senator. I think part of it was last time we were supposed to go to the state fair because you were showing a prized steer animal, not sure if you placed, but I would like to go.
It was supposed to be cattle, and I'm very favorably disposed towards cattle, and they stuck me with a hog. And I know zip about hogs. So Rich Wardner, the Majority Leader in the Senate, who knows hogs, of course, you know, beat me. So it was, it was a rigged deal. It was a rigged deal, I'm telling you.
And perhaps we can go to the fair together.
You and I, we're going to show cattle.
Thank you.
Not hogs.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here and for the way you always approach these issues with us, which is, okay, how do we get something done? I mean, that is huge, and we appreciate it.
And I may too. You know, we worked, I had the privilege of serving as staff on Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee, which the Senator is on. And what I've always appreciated about him and his office and his staff is, let's get stuff done. And so that approach has really been tremendous, and I look forward to continuing to get stuff done.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, Mayor, we'll kind of let you set the tone.
Okay.
And I think if we could, at least let the mayors lead, and then just kind of go from there in terms of whatever is best for getting the Commissioner and Brent the, you know, information. And then you all jump in with any questions at any point.
Yeah. I think what we'll do is do the presentation, and then I'll ask the mayors to comment for their individual communities of how this is important to them and what an impact it has on that. And we always like the idea when you say "action" because when that happens, things seem to move faster. And the Governor, or, excuse me, Senator, is very helpful with us on the diversion. That's moving it. We're very pleased with that. If you're bored, you can go around and see what's going on with that in this community. But this project has been a dream of the state for a long time, and we continue to work on it. I get the next slide, please. Or do I have the clicker? Would you please? Yeah. So we're going to go over the history and the need of the project, a project overview, a financial overview, and the construction progress that we're making because we are in construction as we sit here today. This goes back to 1944, and Dwayne says he might have been born then, but he is very familiar with what's happened. And the difficulty with this project, it kind of went federal, local, federal, local, basically. And because of that, we worked a variety of different ways to try to move forward on this. The Garrison Divergent basically was created in 1955, and we continued to work with the Garrison Divergent to bring water from the west to the east. It's gone through many iterations and changes as time has gone on, and what we had to get through is environmental impact and a record of decision. So a lot of these different movements that happened was the state working with us, the feds working with us. And when you were Governor, Senator Hoven, we changed it a bit to do a state project because we felt we could get that finished quicker. And also, we're having the question of crossing continental divide and how we've worked that with the Canadians as well. But in 2021, we did have a record of decision. Tammy Norgard's been involved in a lawsuit in Missouri. We have been successful in that as well. So we feel very strongly that this project is a goal, and we need to continue to move on it. This is a partnership that we have with the Garrison Conservative District, which is basically a district that will help us build it and maintain it. Lake Agassiz is the user. So the Lake Agassiz Board is basically made up of users. Combination is a partnership as we work with the Garrison Divergent, and we're the users that work with the users and figure out how to do the water and how to give it out to people. The state is involved with Water Commission, Water Topics Overview Committee, and they have been very helpful and supportive of this project of how to go forward. And we feel strongly that the federal government can be very much part of this and help reduce costs and increase efficiency. The project basically is coming from the McCluskey Canal over to Cooperstown and goes back into the water into the Cheyenne River, and it came down to Lake Ashtabula. The Enwas part of the project is the orange color, and that is 32 miles and a treatment plant. We will treat it to the level in which Canadians will accept it. We've had that discussion before. We did have to, for a federal project, have redundancy, so we do have a method in which we can pull out of the Missouri River and do it up to McCluskey, but that's about 40 miles and $200 billion. And the issue with that is basically we're going uphill and then we're going downhill. The beauty about the McCluskey is we're almost going downhill all the way across, so that decreases our maintenance and operation. The biggest part of the project is pipeline, 125 miles of pipe is really the biggest part of it. The flow will be 165 cubic feet per second, and the pipe is basically seven feet tall, so it's 72 inches. The difficulty we have as a community and as a state is the unpredictability of the Red River. And as late as 2011, we had a very good demonstration of this at that time. And that is when we had flows that were at 35 cubic feet per second, a very wet cycle in 11. We came back into 12, and we had flows as low as 50 feet per second. So the discrepancy there, we had to have drought recommendations for the City of Fargo, no watering lawns. We put in ordinance to decrease the water usage. But you've got to remember, Mayor Boshinsky wasn't too happy with me if I didn't have much water coming his way. So he has Grand Forks to take care of as well. But we feel we're very vulnerable in our communities because of the up and down of the flow of the Red River. We also have some trouble with dynamics of climate resiliency, and the state has suffered some droughts in the last few years in which we truly have had a decreased amount of rain and crop damage and issues throughout the state. But we live in a very dynamic, changing climate, and you can just tell, go from one year to the next year, and we can have a lot of water, and the next year we can have very little of water. This is a photograph, 2021, how low the river was going across it, and this is those things that we see. We have basically seen moderate drought in periods all the way through the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, and 2000s. Senator Hoven, you could have walked across the river there. That would have been a deal. And this project is emergency water supply for approximately 50% of the state of North Dakota. And as we watch and anticipate 2075, we feel that users will go up to 500,000 or half a million. I know the Senator and Governor at the time want our state to grow to a million, so we continue to try to have that happen. Senator, or Mayor Boshinsky and I are in a little competition of how many more people we can get in our towns, but we will continue to try to do that. And it will basically, 50% of the state's taxable sales will be in the areas that we're serving. Brandon, do you have any concerns about water in your town?
Yeah, well, certainly, you know, we'll see by 2075 if things go the way they're going now. Grand Forks might be bigger than Fargo, so we'll keep an eye on that. But definitely, you know, there's a clear human need that's there. I think that goes without saying. We're one season away between a flood and a drought. I mean, that can happen at any time. That is the reason that the Red River Valley is such an important agricultural valley. And that kind of gets to the point that I want to make on the industrial use. In Grand Forks, despite whether or not, you know, the crops are coming in locally if there's an extended drought, we are a large producer of value. And in an extended drought, North Dakota is still going to feed the country because we're going to bring products in. If you have a long-term drought, JR Simplot's not going to be able to deliver french fries to McDonald's. You're not going to get sugar in your coffee from American Crystal Sugar. And you're not going to get pasta at Walmart from Philadelphia Macaroni. So I think we take great pride in what we do in our part of the world, but water's a big piece of that, and that's a big human cost to jobs, but also food production across the country. So very important project. We're behind it 100%, and the eastern North Dakota Alternative Water Supply allows us to deliver that at a lot, a lot lower cost to our constituents and our users. So very important project. We're with you all the way, Mayor.
Yeah, and your numbers are old numbers, too.
Yep.
We've grown since then, and the Red River Valley's growing fast. So Bernie Dardis, what's the growth rate in West, where is it?
He's down at that end of the table.
What's the growth rate in West Fargo?
Our community continues to grow, Senator. We're 42,000 plus, nearly 43,000 people. Obviously, you know, with the partnership that we have with the City of Fargo, you know, we buy water from the City of Fargo. My biggest concern and what we're dealing with here is the affordability. Obviously, those costs that will be incurred by our two major cities, Grand Forks and Fargo, as to what that cost is and how it's with the other partners that we have throughout the system. I must say that, you know, your leadership when you were our Governor, as well as now as our Senator, has been critically important. And this past year in the North Dakota Legislature, working with Senator Sorbog and Representative Swantek, and of course Andrea, the Department of Water Resources and the State Water Commission, was critical, critically important, that the investment that the state of North Dakota made in helping us with this project is, and it's, it's just something that we're all very grateful for. You know, Senator Klein, Senator Beckdahl, they both played key roles in their leadership roles within the caucus to make sure that there was money available to us. And so we've got to be very grateful for the North Dakota Legislature for what they've done and continue to do in supporting this project. And obviously, with your support, that speaks volumes to them.
Yeah, but I think if you check latest census, we're, I thought we're over 800,000 now, and so you're already probably 400,000 plus, and that's going to keep growing because this is a fast-growing area in the valley. West Fargo, I mean, if you look at the schools, Grand Forks is growing, certainly Fargo. This is going to serve a lot of people now, but a lot more as you go forward each year.
In the metro area, the last 10 years, we've grown 20%, so we have continued growth, and we continue wanting to grow that area. Our rural systems are part of the project as well. It's been a small community, so we have eastern part of the state almost from mid-state over.
You say 500,000 in '75. I'll bet you it'll be 500,000 before 2030. In other words, by the time this gets built, I'll bet it's close to that half a million numbers that it will serve easily.
Very good. Endos benefits, basically, the federal government, in some ways, we're currently only using 3% of the capacity right now, the Garrison Divergent facility. End users will pay the federal water service, so Endos will provide a steady revenue stream to the federal government because we're going to be paying for the water. Our end users will pay a portion of the ONM facilities, which is currently borne only by the federal government, and the McCluskey Canal will be utilized for its intended purpose rather than going to a dead end, going and coming across the state. And we feel that we, as Mayor Dardis mentioned, is we'll save millions for the state and local sponsors because local sponsors pay 25% of the cost. If we can drop down the cost of construction, that truly helps all the local users because they have less money they have to raise. And Bernie's kind of squawked. If we make his water bill go up $3 or $4 a month, his taxpayers might get upset. So that's a concern we have. And the rural sites, Tom said if he went up $5 a month, he would be a little bit trouble in Carrington, right? Yeah. Is that right?
That's correct.
So you want us to keep it as low cost as possible?
That's correct.
Yeah. So he doesn't talk very much.
No, but you can understand him. It's kind of to the point.
I'll have a chance to talk later.
So initially, it'll save us 200 million in the beginning phase, but it also will save us on the other side of that is the ONM cost will be less because of gravity and the height to which we're at in mid-state.
You know, and, I mean, if you look at that McCluskey, I mean, all that infrastructure, and you've been to the state Pumping Plant, you've seen Lake Audubon. I don't know, did we actually get you to the McCluskey Canal when you were out?
I don't think we made it to the canal itself.
I mean, it's beautiful, but I mean, to build all that today, Dwayne DeCrave, where are you?
Right here.
What would that cost? I mean, if you...
Billions.
Yeah. And so to leave that sitting there and not use it? So, I mean, not only the fact you're going to save, you know, a quarter of a billion dollars in terms of building this project, you're going to save millions every year for all the ratepayers. You're going to strand billions of dollars of investment that doesn't get, I mean, that would be, it just would make no sense whatsoever. And it's just sitting there not being used. And if we built it today, as Dwayne said, it'd be in the hills. And it's beautiful. I mean, we'll take you out to McCluskey Canal, Canal, too. You can either shoot some pheasants along the way or fish, but it's, it's great. I mean, yet it's, it's like they built it yesterday. It's really impressive. And to leave that sitting there unused is like throwing a billion dollars away.
And I've driven the length of the canal.
Yeah, so you know, it's fantastic.
Yeah, it is.
Sorry.
I could provide some input to that. I'll give you a little history on the McCluskey Canal. Back when I was coming to NDSU, my freshman and sophomore year, I worked as an oiler on a drag line as we were digging the canal. And my family, we grew up at Denhoff, which is between, just nine miles east of McCluskey. So we have this tremendous asset there with the canal system coming out of Lake Audubon, which would have eventually created the Lone Tree Reservoir. My dad was a fisherman. He loved to fish, and he told me, we're going to have the best fishing we've ever seen with this Lone Tree Reservoir. Well, lo and behold, the issues with the biota, you know, going into the Hudson Drainage, that stopped that whole project. And, you know, the people out there in Sheridan County and Wells County are still very kind of upset about the fact that all this land was taken out of production. And there is some irrigation going on now out of Turtle Lake and that area, out of McCluskey Canal. So when I heard that the Bureau was interested in coming back and saying, hey, let's look at a shortcut with this pipeline, that's the best news that I've ever heard, and that's the good news that the people in Sheridan and Wells County, that we're finally going to see some benefit come out of the canal system, other than the pheasant hunting and the fishing, which is excellent around that area. But there's a lot of land that the federal government acquired from people, and the people in that area were promised a lot of things, and of course, the promise failed because of what happened there with the Hudson Bay Drainage. So, so I think, you know, as I talked to landowners, I grew up in that area, and I stayed in that area, and I financed farmers for 40 years, so I, I had the direct, you know, conversation with a lot of people in that area. And I don't know that anybody's totally against the project, but they're, they're happy to see that there's going to be a use for that now, and that there's going to be some benefit that communities like Carrington and other areas can get out of this, you know, Red River Valley Water Supply Pipeline.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Very succinct comments. Next slide, please. I'm okay on this one?
Yeah, okay.
A lot of people sometimes wonder where we are on this project, and this is our most successful year in the legislative body to get 240 million for a two-year period. The state has put in 180 million, and the locals are going to put in 60 million. And we're up and running and constructing, and the project's on the go now. So a lot of times, people always say, well, when are you going to start? Well, we've already started, and we're making tremendous progress on this as we presently go. The issue that we're having, which the Senator's very aware of, is we need to increase MRI ceiling. MRI and R dollars are nearly exhausted, and for the Endos part, that orange part, the eligible share would be 454 million. Those savings would pass to the local users as well as to the state, and that would bring down the need for the state to put as much money in, and the need for the local users as well. That would make Bernie real happy because then his monthly charge to his residents would be much lower. would be much lower. So at this point, we, our look at the NWS funding needs by commitment of dollars, it's broke out over several years, and it would be at 454.43. But we'd start around 100 million. Senator Hoven, that's okay, isn't 100 million?
Mm-hmm.
Then goes to 140, and then to 217. So just in doing that, Kip Kovar has gone through this with the team, and we figured out how much it would do and how well we could do that. With the diversion, we tried to get a six-year build with the Red River Valley Water Supply. We would do a 10-year build. And the idea is that if you could get it faster, yes, we'd go faster because it's pipeline, a lot of it's getting the pipeline in. The good news is on our bidding lately, we've had better bids. The steals went up and then went down. And on our last bid, we came in underbid, under engineers' estimate. So we feel that we're pretty reasonable on our bidding and what we think the needs will be going forward. And then basically, Kip Kovar will go this part. He's going to talk a little bit about where we are in construction, what's going on, and show you some pictures of what's happening.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Starting on the left-hand side of your map, Senator and Commissioner, I believe you met us out there on site at the intake. So there's two contracts there. The Missouri River Contract One, which was the wet well, I think that's where we stood over and looked down at the tunneling machine. Contract Two was the 1,600-foot tunnel under the Missouri River. So, you know, as we started building those two contracts is when the Bureau of Reclamation came back and said, you can use the canal. So that's why you see a little bit of confusion on the map there. So Missouri River Contract One and Two were built, but then reclamation came along, allowed us to use the canal. And so the orange portion up there is the NWS, the federal portion. The green line up there represents the state portion. And then other active contracts, so Contract 5A is actually complete. That was a mile and a quarter with a long tunnel. Contract 5B's nine miles with a short tunnel. And then the Cheyenne River Discharge Structure on the Cheyenne River, that is complete. And any questions with that, active and ongoing? Just have some construction photos for you. So 72-inch pipeline, we have to have a minimum of seven and a half feet of cover over top of the pipe because of freezing situations in North Dakota. We have lots of freezing that goes on down to 10 feet. So we have 150 foot right-of-way, and we use every inch of that 150 foot right-of-way for the project. It's really a big dirt-moving project. And drone footage here of, on the left-hand side is staging pipe. And then on the right side, we don't have a lot of restoration done because we just, we just started the project in 2020. But on the right-hand side of your screen is our first look at restoration. So, you know, corn is, corn and the beans obviously don't look as good the first year. We didn't expect it to look as good as the first year. But we're hearing that, you know, three to five years down the road, that yield will be back. And then this, on the left-hand side of your screen is the Missouri River Intake. That's where you, you came out there, but it looks really good. It's all greened up, cleaned up, looks a little bit different. And then on the right-hand side of your screen is the Cheyenne River Discharge. So that's where it enters into the Cheyenne River and off into Lake Ashtibila. So that's the end of the project, beginning and end. And then just our work plan for the next two years, we're going to, we're going to start designing the canal intake, the biota water treatment plant. We're going to do final design on 10 miles of NWS in hopes that we could get some federal funding and that we can be shovel-ready. We're going to continue design in the green kind of section there in Wells County. And then we're ready to award 18 miles of pipeline, and we're hoping to do that in the next couple of weeks. And then the green part there by Carrington, that's under construction. We have another segment that's shovel-ready. And then final design in the last segment. So that covers the 240 million, the entire project, as the mayor said, is on a 10-year construction build.
Any questions of Kip? Kind of understand the project, then differences the two. Take care, Kip.
Questions, guys? Brett?
No, it's great. Thanks for the review. So state funding, kind of down the road, is that pretty well lined up? What's the, what's the prospect for the state funding kind of in the next five, six years?
Yeah, I can answer that. So of course, for the 23-25 biennium, it was already mentioned 180 million and the 60 million from the locals. And then right now, intent that's in the bill for this agency is saying over 900 million.
Okay.
So, but of course, they still have to come back every session, but that's what the intent is right now.
Okay.
There has been some talk by the legislative team, maybe even bonding it out like they did with the diversion. That would change the time sequence of the build, but that, that's in discussion with Water.
Yeah, and I wouldn't be surprised if we, you know, can actually get the federal funding. And, and you know, it's different in the federal. They like to have it in place up front, right? But if we could get that done, I wouldn't be a bit surprised if the state didn't bond out and then just build it as rapidly, as expeditiously as they could because they'll save a lot of money. So I think, you know, with what Andrea, what Trav just talked about is, if we can nail down the funding so it's in place, like we did on the flood protection, I think the state would respond to that and build it sooner.
And the good thing, Commissioner, when we did the diversion, we've already had over 50 to 100 million dollars in savings. So the build, when we built it faster, it was cheaper. Andrea?
Yeah, and I think as we go into this next legislative session, working really closely with the mayors, Garrison, and the governor, right, just trying to figure out what that package could look like. And we know that bonding has worked out really good on the Fargo diversion. But then, yeah, just recognizing the importance of getting water to this part of the state, and you already saw the 50% of the population, it's a high priority.
So I have one more follow-up question. So you said, you know, one of the things I think we're facing reclamation across the West is kind of the impact of inflation, right, on construction projects? So you say that you've actually got some more favorable bids here recently?
Was it Duane, 66 million with engineers, and it came in 61 on our last bid? Yeah, 66 went 61.
All right, that's good.
And we, it's kind of simple. It's pipe.
Yeah.
So it's, a lot of it is just the material cost.
I think that's what we're seeing, too, is to the extent that we can buy more and have it on hand, it also decreases the prices. So perhaps that's where we can partner.
So Senator, you're just always asking, you know, what are you asking for, Tim? So this is at 454. And Jesse, can you write that down because I don't want him to lose that number? And then we have 90 million NWS shovel-ready that we could do if we had funding sooner. And it's really, as Senators talked about, is increasing the MRI limit that sits there right now. Now it opened, Tom, do you want to say anything else? You were very good at the first part, just telling the impact on your citizens and people in your location as well, impacting your community in your town.
Well, like I said, the, you know, there was kind of a major impact when the McCluskey Canal was actually built or dug at McCluskey back in the 70s. You know, the town of McCluskey was thriving and, you know, kind of looking forward to the recreational part and the irrigational part. But then, of course, that didn't happen, so the town of McCluskey's kind of shriveling up, just like the town of Goodrich where I went to school. Carrington, we've been able to maintain our population base. We're a city within the city limits, 2065 and 2010, and we're 2080 and 2020 census. But then we have another couple hundred residents within, say, the extraterritorial around the city of Carrington. So the city of Carrington is kind of a hub, just like the city of Harvey, north of the Lone Tree, proposed Lone Tree Reservoir. So, you know, the cities of 2,000 or so are trying, we're kind of maintaining our own, but these smaller communities, McCluskey, Goodrich, Denhoff, Ertzfield, they're having a struggle to, to maintain that population base just because they don't have the economic base to hold the jobs and that type of thing. But we're fortunate at Carrington that we have enough activity that we've maintained an employment base and, you know, living wage jobs, and, and we're, I feel, a thriving community, so.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor Shelley Carlson from Moorhead, Minnesota, just across the bridge here, has been a great partner for us going forward. How are you doing with the water supply?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney, and again, thank you, Senator Hoven, for the invitation to participate in this meeting. I know that Moore Public Service has been a member of the Lake Agassiz Water Authority for a number of years, and as a former chair of the Metro Flood Diversion Authority, current board member, and upcoming chair of the Metro Flood Diversion Authority, I've been aware of this project, even though my city is in the state of Minnesota. We are a very fast-growing community, similar to Mayor Dardis in West Fargo. In the last 10 years, we grew 17%. Clay County, of which 60% of the population is in the cities of Moorhead and Dilworth. Clay County is the fourth fastest-growing county in the entire state of Minnesota. The other, the top three are down in the metro, and number four is up here in Moorhead. You know, the city of Moorhead and several of the other communities on the western side of Minnesota are very interested in this project as far as water resiliency. Even though the city of Moorhead has access to an aquifer, you know, water resiliency and the way climate change is happening, it's always beneficial to have an additional second backup. Excuse me. Similarly to Mayor Dardis, we also are trying to determine the affordability of this project, but we are very in support of this project. And I do want to give the opportunity to the general manager of Moore Public Service to make sure that he, and then also Mark Pritchard, has the opportunity to maybe add more from the Minnesota side.
Sure. No, thank you, Mayor. Again, Travis Schmidt, general manager. Mayor, you hit it right on the head. It's a very, it's a great project. We're very interested in it. It's just the funding mechanisms, because we are in the state of Minnesota, that we're trying to figure out. That is, that is a key piece to, to the growth in Clay County and Moorhead and Dilworth as well, too. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Dave Carles, Valley City, North Dakota.
Well, thank you all for being here, folks from the Bureau. Andrea, excuse me. Senator, we're, we're public power people here, you know, Moorhead and Valley City, but we're not here public power today. And Mayor Mahoney caught me off-guard a little bit because usually he talks when we're at these meetings and I don't.
He's Irish.
But all right, I'm glad you're here to see the need. We have some unique situations. Fargo along the Red and Valley City with the Cheyenne River Valley, which is the largest basin in the state, all that water comes through Valley City. And so like here, we have drought meetings in the morning and permanent flood protection meetings in the afternoon. All right, and so yesterday, we had some senators in, in Valley City, and they came around to the, to the lava and the, and the pipeline, and they said, well, you, you aren't a part of this, are you? And I said, well, yes, yes, we are. And he said, well, you have all the water you need. I went, no, Senator, this, this is allocated water. So, so there's, there's education to be done out there. And, and so when you have the flood in the spring and drought by July, you need something with a fluid operation to keep, keep it flowing. And from the small towns of which Carrington and, and we are, you know, we're very concerned about the costs because we don't, we don't have the cash flow to handle much. So at what point is it an expense for our community, and what point is it an investment? And, and if the cost isn't down, we, we won't be able to afford it, and we'll be at the mercy of sitting there, watching the water flow through our town, and we don't have enough. And we have some rednecks out there who won't understand that at all. But so your consideration for funding assistance is, is critical to us, and I thank you again for being here.
Mayor Brandon Bishinsky?
Yeah, I think I already hit on it, but the only thing I would add is, similar to Moorhead, East Grand Forks is on the Minnesota side, very interested in this project as well. They've already, for the most part, committed to part of our nomination and funding that as well. So I think we see the need all from south to north along the valley, so thank you.
And Mayor Bernie Dardis, do you want to be the wrap-up hitter here?
One more point that I'd like to make is that, you know, on the slide that's in front of us right now, the 454 million eligible for federal share of NWS. Commissioner, Senator, I can't, I can't emphasize enough, when we were meeting with the leadership at the North Dakota House and Senate with regard to funding of this, how critically important that question was. How many times we got asked is what the federal government might participate in this project. We talk about affordability, whether it's Tom in Carrington or Dave in Valley City. If you take a list of the people that are, that are signed up for this, there's some, there's some gaps there that we need to fill in. And it all boils down to the affordability of it. So it is critically important that we have the federal partner contributing at a level that can bring the Carringtons and the Valley Cities onto this as well, as well as my, as the, my community that I represent. But I can't emphasize enough how many times we were asked what the eligibility was, what the federal government might participate in this project. And that's critically important that you take that back, is that we are, we are very dependent on the success of this and being in a 10-year bill, that we have to have some federal funding for this. Thank you.
Mayor Mahoney?
Carles. One thing I didn't mention that I didn't hear around here either, you know, we've all seen projects that people get all excited about building or doing in your community, and then after it's done, they forget about what's going on down the road. And the O&M here is another factor for us that, that if, if we have to invest so much in the, in the project itself, we can't afford the O&M, we're still in hurt bag. So just a comment. Thank you.
And really, the O&M drops in half if we come out of McCluskey because we don't have to pump up and over and treat at the same time. So it's a huge difference for us if we go out of McCluskey. Well, Senator, I'm going to give it back to you. You've asked the asked, and now we'll see if you can do your magic and, you know, get another billion-dollar project going in the state of North Dakota.
Yeah, well, this is a really important one. And first, Mayor, to, to all the mayors and to everybody else that's here, you really laid it out well, and it's such a compelling case. I do have a few comments, and then I'm going to ask Commissioner Teuton and Brett for some, some thoughts as well. But before I do that, I just want to turn to what Duane, Tammy, John, or anybody around the table here, or, you know, that's with us, is there something that, that you would like to add, maybe we missed, or, you know, just anything else that, that you think is helpful as we work on this? Tammy?
I just had one comment that I don't think was hit on, and that is, one benefit to the Bureau is the more water that gets sold out of the canal, you end up with the repayment contract, and you get more of the facility repaid, and that's a huge federal benefit as well.
Thanks, Tammy. Yeah, Duane?
I guess the only thing I would add that hasn't, we haven't hit on today is that our groundwater in North Dakota is pretty much appropriated out. And so groundwater is not going to be an answer in North Dakota to, for the population. The Missouri River is the only answer in North Dakota that we have for the eastern and central part of the state. All the other big projects have been built in North Dakota. Eastern and central North Dakota are the only part of the state that haven't been covered by a major regional water project.
Right, which is where we have the fastest growth and the largest population. And it's not just North Dakota, it's Minnesota when you talk about the Red River Valley. Thanks to both. The other? Yes, sir.
I just want to make some comments with Mayor Dardis said. Was affordability. And we are on the opposite side. I'm from a rural system, and we're struggling to keep population. And the affordability really gets it because if, if it comes in too high, we're going to have less and less people to pay for it. And I think all the rural systems are in this, kind of in the same boat. So I just wanted to add that.
Right, and that's particularly important because you can always trust a man with a mustache, and so you know.
Senator, you've always told me.
If you disregard what everybody else has said, you know that that's rock solid right there. What else, guys, that you want to bring up? And again, did we miss anything? Yes, sir.
I guess I'm on record for my comment that I really don't think the state of North Dakota will- North Dakota will really know the total economic impact of this project once this thing gets up and on. The, uh, the dollars that stem from the population, from industrial, to just, uh, the overall impact of the state, I guess that was my two cents for today.
I think that's absolutely right, in terms of the, you know, the economic development and all those types of things, uh, as well. You know, huge impact. Co-PAC, you've been awfully, uh, oh, I thought I sent back, okay. Anyone else? Alright, um, just then, just by the way, some, uh, closing, uh, comments. So I guess, Commissioner Brent, um, just, if, if you would, maybe, are there some thoughts you can share with the folks here? I mean, clearly, you know, we, we've got to, uh, reauthorize Dakota Water Resources so that we have the room. Again, a lot of things get authorized, and so I, I don't see that, you know, we'll, we'll put that in, in Worda, and it'll go through. Uh, that's important for the state of North Dakota, that's important for the, for the tribes. Okay? So I think for a lot of reasons, that, that's kinda, we'll, you know, get our home, that's getting our homework done, okay? But, given that, we really need to figure out how we're gonna work ahead here on the funding. Uh, because obviously, it works best if, rather than as, what's done with the water resource, uh, Dakota Water Resource Act, historically, where you dribbled out so much every year. That, that is not, that dog ain't gonna hunt here. Right? And, and again, I mean, you guys react to me honestly, uh, this is, this needs to be more like we, we did with the Red River Valley, uh, flood protection project, in that we really need to get the 454, get that in place, and then let the state and the locals, you know, work off that, and build this thing in a way that can be done most cost-effectively. And, you know, and for them, it's really important, as you, as we've gone around here and you've listened to them, you know, they're signing people up more and more all the time. But how do you do that when you don't know what your cost is gonna be? And how can you really nail down the cost until we get this federal, the 454 put in place for them? Then they can really sit down, uh, with their calculator, and, and really smart guys like Shockley over there can tell me right to the fraction of a penny what it's gonna cost them 100 years from now. That's how good he is. But seriously, they need to know this stuff to, to move forward. So it's not just, I mean, it's not just getting the money in place so they can go ahead with the construction. They need it, you know, to keep doing what they're doing, which is at the state and local level, putting the money out there and doing the work. And if, you know, we don't wanna hold, you know, we wanna help them, we don't wanna be the bottleneck. And so ta-talk to me a little bit, while you got the folks here, just how do we, you know, work forward on the funding, which is, we all know, that's the real challenge here, the authorization we'll get.
So I'm gonna have Brent first talk about the region, and then bring it up a little bit, what we're doing in DC.
Thanks. Alright. Let's see, so I've worked for reclamation for 26 years now. The last few years have been, I guess, fun, and, but also rewarding, because we actually have received funding through, like, bipartisan infrastructure law to address some of these real water projects that have been in motion, you know, starting in around year 2000, right? So they've been long, drawn-out projects. It takes persistence for one, right? And so, you know, we've had to compete for funding in the president's budget, in Congress for appropriations. And so, you know, we've made progress over years, but it's been slow, right? Bill came along, um, you know, a billion dollar for real water. We worked hard to make sure that our region and projects in North Dakota, South Dakota, competed well in that. So that's been helpful. You know, we've been able to make good progress in getting these projects near completion. That's been, that's been very official. I see, you know, I think my region's budget right now, we're around, around $200 million or so in appropriated dollars that we spread amongst nine western states. And so it's not, you know, it's money, but it's not 454 million dollars kinda thing. So to me, uh, there's two parts. One, it's, you know, getting authorization, right? Cause we have to, we have to stay within our swim lanes, what we can do. You know, and, you know, so one of your fellow senators, Comrade Burns, uh, from Montana, kind of a colorful individual.
He was an auctioneer, yeah, he was very colorful.
Yeah, he, he was great. But he always said, you know, authorizations are easy to come by, appropriations are a lot harder, right?
Well, sure.
And so I think that's the challenge, is trying to find, is there another big bill out there that's gonna come through that'll help?
Well, what about under the BIF? Can't, I mean, that's, that's over five years, can't we plug in there? What do you think, Commissioner?
So just.
I mean, we need to, we need to pounce on that like a cat on a fat rat, don't you think?
Yes. So just to give you some context of how we plan, and it's very similar to what Dr. Travenic had talked about, we're planning for FY '26 now. Um, and so when you look at it, when you start a fiscal year for, for a, a federal agency, the Bureau of Reclamation, you're planning two years ahead. So knowing immediately 454, but also 90 million in shovel-ready is helpful, because we're not only looking at our discretionary funding, we're also looking at the bipartisan infrastructure law, which this project competes well for, which is why we've dedicated 77 million dollars to North Dakota alone since almost a two-year enactment of that legislation. But that is something we can plan for and that we have on hand to be able to work towards. But I do think we have to look at that 454 and then work our way backwards so that we, and, and you've done that, actually, in your, how you've sketched it out, '97, 140, '17. And then we can look at that as it competes within the entire Bureau. But what I can tell you is, these projects are important. When I, I remember being on, a staffer on the committee, that there were some projects we weren't seeing to completion for decades upon decades. And with this money, we're seeing them within a decade. And we are committed to that, because we understand what it means to these communities. So just wanna thank the continued cooperation with all of you, and just reiterate our commitment, Senator, to working with you and to the state and all of you to see a path forward.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, we can kinda formulate that plan with you all, I, I think then maybe getting this crew down to meet with Shland Young at OMB again, uh, would be good. I, I really would like to see if there's a way we could, uh, go after BIF funding, uh, because it's, it's in that five-year window and get it, get it lined up. Does that, does that seem reasonable, Commissioner Brent? Is that a way?
Yes.
Do you have other suggestions or recommendations on how we should try to go after? But, but I, I, again, I, we need to start doing that now in anticipation of the authorization. I don't, and I think, well, maybe we'll get the authorization done at the end of the year, but you know how things are, it could be the end of next year. So we gotta, we've gotta work both of these concurrently, right? And so I really think we need to start working that funding piece.
We, we're committed to that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if that, does that seem like a reasonable way to do it? Now, we'll formulate with you based on what you've heard here, how you think it would be best to, uh, approach it, kinda, you know, penned out over a few years or however it goes. And then maybe go to OMB, make the pitch.
Yeah, so I think, you know, as we're funding these projects, there's been three pots of money, right? It's all congressional money, but we've got regular appropriations, so it's in the president's budget. We've been taking advantage of bipartisan infrastructure law money as well. And then, you know, Congress has, you know, added extra capability for money, or project for water, right? And so we've got a hundred million dollars a couple of years. And so I think those three pots are probably need to continue doing, right? What's in the president's budget, pick and manage a bill, and then if, if Congress continues to say is, say, "Hey, we're gonna add money to your budget for real water, here's a, here's a bucket of money, now you go figure out how to spend it," I think those three things help.
And I think what's helpful is, when you, when you look at these projects, you can get shovels on the ground, you can get yellow trucks out there quickly. And that matters when you're looking at funding and how to obligate it. So 90 million dollars shovel-ready, sounds good to me.
Me too. Well, that's exactly then what we do. We'll put that together with you, make sure you have a comfort level with it. I think we'd like to sit down with the OMB director at that point, we may have these folks come down. But I really think that, you know, we, we need to see, we can't nail that game plan down and then coordinate that with, like I say, you know, we'll line up the, uh, the, the funding involved. That, that's not an issue, but, but we really need to get going on the.
Sure, I mean, I'll have to work with you on that. We got the Dakota Area Officer, Joe Hall and Danny. They're very.
I'm sorry, Senator.
We got Joe Hall and Danny Fettig also. They're the ones that are kinda key to all this, right? They help advocate for your projects.
I know the bosses are sitting here and all, but does that sound okay, you know?
How's the deal about the meeting?
Thanks, Danny.
We'll make it happen.
I like those words.
No, they're really good. Uh, that, that's mainly what I had, uh, again, um, any wrap-up thoughts then that we, you wanna, Brent or Commissioner?
Yeah. Like I say, this is an exciting time for me personally in my career, cause we're in, you know, we are making progress, we're getting water to these rural communities, which I didn't think was gonna happen this quick. So it is, you know, I recognize the importance of these projects to communities, you know, clean pot of water is key to a lot of things, um, just basic human survival, also economic development. So I'm an advocate for these kinda projects, I see the importance of them, and will continue, you know, continue to advocate for them. Uh, but it does help, right? When you can say, "Here's what we're gonna get done this year," those kinda things do help. To say, "Here's what we're actually gonna get accomplished."
Yeah.
And Brent is very convincing, so.
This would be a game-changing project for the state of North Dakota, and really to resiliency and long-term ability for us to compete long-term, it very much helps. Now, I know, uh, Mayor Boshinsky, Senator was giving Dave Pepcorn a secret play for NDSU this Saturday, but, uh, I'm presuming the Bison will come out on top of that one, but.
I don't, you know, we should actually have Pepcorn and Boshinsky make their predictions, you know, as, you know, both, you know, professional athletes, they obviously, okay, no. Thanks, uh, again, thanks to all of you for coming out. I, I gotta say, um, you know, the, the way that you all have been working together, all the work that's been done, uh, Tammy, to you, to the Conservancy District, to all of the board members, the amount of work that they've done, the, the assets that are sitting there ready to be utilized, I mean, this thing, this is a project, this is a good story to tell, uh, in terms of what we can bring to fruition here and, and capitalize on all these things that have been done over, going all the way back to 1944, for crying out loud. So, uh, thanks to everybody for your great work, and really, Commissioner, to you and Brent, thanks for coming out. And I think we, we've kinda got a game plan here, and, uh, we've got some great folks helping us, and so hopefully we can, we can keep it moving. So with that, again, thanks, Mayor. Last, I guess, last word, thanks for hosting us. Last word for you before we finish.
Well, the Senator and the Commissioner are gonna do a press conference here at 11:00, so Lawa Board will start at 11:30, if, if everybody understands that. Uh, he's usually not long-winded, so I think we will be starting at 11:30, so.
Yeah, we're on time, right? I mean, well, almost.
But thank you, this is really, in a sense, a kickoff for the federal part of the project. I very much appreciate you coming here. And what I'm really excited about is, we talked about three different options rather than one, and different ways of trying to make this work. But I think you understand is that in a community with all the climate things going on, resiliency is just paramount to any community that you do that. And all of us know, as small communities, if you get ag added, separate industry in a small town, that helps, but if you don't have water, you can't do it. So we really feel strongly for the competitiveness of the state of North Dakota, this is a project we truly need.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.